Good evening and welcome to the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, March 17th, 2008. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese. Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson. Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Docan.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Thank you, Kevin. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to our citizens here in the council chambers tonight and to our citizens who are watching the broadcast of this council meeting on our local access television station. Tonight we have one public hearing that has to do with the rate schedule for the users of the wastewater treatment plant. Then we have Mr. Jeff Royland, who's going to talk about a merger that our local Intel Communications is considering, and then a variety of committee reports. Before we begin, I'll ask the council members if they have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under miscellaneous, I'd like to add consideration of a special council meeting on March 31st.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, there's two items that need to be added. One is, we'll call it eight A. Mr. Jim Mogan, who is an attorney, wants to speak to the council, and we've allowed that. The second would be fifteen A, which is council committee meeting dates. Fifteen A. If there's nothing else, we'll move to the consent agenda.
And tonight, the consent agenda includes the city council minutes of March 3rd, the utilities commission of March 10th, the planning commission minutes of March 12th, the building inspection report for February, the housing and redevelopment authority minutes of February 12th, and the community education and recreation board minutes of February 22nd. With that, council?
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, those in favor say aye. Opposed, that carries. Next is number seven on the agenda, which is our scheduled public hearing. And at this time, I will open the public hearing, and I'll call on our city administrator, Mick Schmidt, to explain what this is about. Mick?
Mr. Mayor, the public hearing was published for 7:10.
7:10, we better wait then. Okay? We'll pull back on that until at least 7:10, as it was advertised. Then we'll go to number eight on the agenda, which is our presentation from Mr. Jeff Royland, who is the general manager of Intel Communications. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Back on February 7th, Iowa Telecom Services of Newton, Iowa acquired or agreed to acquire Bishop Communications of Annandale, Minnesota. With that, Lakedale Telephone falls under that umbrella of Bishop Communications, which also is the majority shareholder of Intel Communications here in Wilmer. And due to them owning the majority share of Intel, based on our franchise agreement governing us, consent is required from the city to approve of that. And so, I presented with, about a month ago, to Mick, a consent letter that I think was delivered or in your packets, along with some press releases in regards to the acquisition or the announcement. And so, just wanted to clarify that the name of Intel Communications is not going to change, the personnel or the operations is not going to change. Everything will stay as is and stay status quo. So, more or less, just want to answer any questions, if there is any, but...
I think Mr. Fagerly has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, at one time, the municipal utilities and the REA co-op was a partner.
Yep.
Do they still have any share options?
They still have, they still remain as a single vote, just like they always have.
Okay.
But their ownership has pretty much diluted, based on any kind of future capital calls that we've had in the past, so...
Okay. But they still have one?
They still have a vote, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council members have a question or comment about this? Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will anything else change besides the ownership? Many fee schedules? Are there going to be any up charges, or...
No, I mean, there's, as of today, there is no forecast of any kind of change. Intel hasn't had a rate increase on our video services since 2004. We may have to look at our own rates, just for our increase in cost. But other than normal, there has been no hint of anything changing, actually. All the entities actually, including Lakedale, will act as an affiliate of Iowa Telecom. So, I don't see any immediate changes at all.
So, they'll continue to keep an office in Wilmer?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Mick?
Yes, Mayor, we have some staff comments.
Please. Kevin, you want to go with those?
Mayor Heitke, members of the council, as you know, we received this letter that you've probably read from Jeff, and it assured us that the Intel technicians and employees are staying put. And, of course, that's a good thing, so you have confidence that your TV's not going black at the end of the merger here, the buyout. But pursuant to some of the franchise regulations, there's a few items that we need to consider as we do our proper due diligence here, that we owe that to the taxpayers. We have a right to request the financial 394 form to take a look at the stability of the new company coming in. Any outstanding franchise fee issues, we could make sure they're all cleaned up now. You have the right to ask for the Iowa telecommunications service franchise agreements in existence, where staff could go ahead and call the governing authorities and those establishments, and take a look at what kind of programs they're running, and what kind of technical difficulties may be there, if any. But I think what we need to do, staff recommendation, is that we do request some of these things that are optional to us, so that we have a week or two here to go ahead and call other government agencies, or to look at the financial 394 form that they, by our request, could fill out, and just to make sure that we have what appears that we have on paper. I think that that's what we owe our taxpayers, since we work so hard on that franchise. So, staff recommendation is going to refer this matter to finance, and really to request those things of Intel at this point.
Council, do you agree with that? Anybody have any problem with referring it to finance? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to move this matter to the finance committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move this matter to the finance committee, based on staff request. Any further comment about that? Bruce, did you want to say anything?
I just wanted to go back to the Allied Power issue a little bit. Jeff did comment on that there is still one voting share there, but some of the shares have been diluted. And I think Allied Power has taken exceptions to the way those, that accounting was done on those. I don't know if that is an issue that can be addressed under the franchise or not, but I think that at some point, that that is going to need to be addressed, so...
Jeff, go ahead, Bruce.
That's just for information only, I guess.
I have a couple of questions, Jeff. Does the co-op, the Canoei County co-op or Allied Power also have to sign off on this? Because of that previous arrangement that Bruce just commented?
I don't believe so. Not internally, for us. I don't know if, Kevin?
I would agree with that. We have a Intel selling to Iowa Communications, or I forgot the parent company already, Bishop Communications. But Allied Power is just a component part of Intel, and at this point, we make that assumption that they're willing sellers. So, that wouldn't really be up for discussion. We can discuss it, but it would not be a point of holding up the activity.
All right.
It would be based on what Iowa Communications offers.
I'd like to ask our city attorney, Rich, is there any concerns that you can think of from a legal point of view, or from, that we're not talking about here yet tonight?
I think Kevin has already referred this down to the consultant, haven't you, Kevin, to be reviewed?
That is correct. We've just had a quick review with Brian Grogan to make sure there aren't big items that we're overlooking. We have reviewed this, these items before, when Charter made a few jumps and hoops from heritage, and all sorts of names over time.
Rich, any other concerns that you think of?
No.
Councilmembers, anything else you want to talk about here? The motion, and it's been seconded, is to refer it to finance committee. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Jeff, you'll have to come back before the finance committee.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. It is now just past 7:10, so we will go to the scheduled public hearing that was scheduled for 7:10. And again, this public hearing is open, and I'll have our city administrator explain what this is about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, before you tonight is an ordinance amending the rate schedule for users of the city's wastewater treatment plant. There's a copy of the ordinance in your packet. There are essentially three sections involved with this ordinance, which we have amended each year since, I believe, the year 2000, with modest increases in order to prepare for the new wastewater treatment plant project. So, in section one, you have your basic user charges. These are metered rates, and you can see the current rates are crossed out, the new rates are underlined. I want to point out, however, that we have erred in the designation of the utility replacement charge. That $3 is the current rate, and the finance committee and council had recommended that it be increased to $4 here about a month ago, and we didn't catch that in this initial publication. The second session, section deals with debt service charges for all of the different sized meters. And then there's another section that deals with the debt service for Jenny O'Turkey Stores. And then you have in the, in section three, the non-metered rates. Any residential, commercial structures, it's particularly the Eagle Lake properties that fall into that category. Back to the utility replacement charge, in consulting with the city attorney, we are of the opinion that's probably a significant amendment at this point. We would ask, though, that the council follow through with the recommendation of the finance committee and the full council, and amend that utility replacement charge from $3 to $4. And then you would need to continue the hearing, because we would want to publish it one more time. And that hearing, then, would be continued on April 7th.
All right. At this time, if there's anybody in the public audience that wishes to ask any questions or make any comments about this proposed rate increase schedule for the wastewater treatment plant, now's the time to speak up. Does anybody wish to make any comments or ask any questions? If not, the public hearing is now closed, and the matter comes up to the city council.
We don't want to close it, Mr. Mayor. We will want to continue the hearing to the 7th.
The public hearing is not closed. It will be continued until April 7th. At that council meeting, then the council will decide what they're going to do. So, if you think of questions or comments in the in-between, you can come to the April 7th meeting and ask them. I would like to point out for the public and for the media that the user charge for section one is 1,000 gallons of water has been at the rate of $1.29. That will now increase, or the proposed increase is that for 1,000 gallons of water, it'll go to $1.37. All right. At this time, then, Mick, we move on. Councilmember Gardner?
You'll need a motion, Mr. Mayor, to amend this, the utility replacement charge in the ordinance, from $3 to $4.
And this has already been talked about at finance, and it's been approved by the council?
Yes.
Would somebody like to make that, a motion for that resolution?
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for a resolution that changes the utility replacement charge from $3 to $4. That's per month, Mick, right? Or is that annually?
Per month.
Per month. All right. Any more comment about that? Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The extra dollar that was added just a couple of months ago, that was, wasn't actually for utility replacement, wasn't it, for stormwater?
The council, and the intent of the council was to designate it for stormwater improvements.
Okay, so it'll be in a stormwater fund?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments about this? Roll call?
That's just a motion.
Simple motion?
Yeah.
Simple motion. Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a motion to continue the hearing, then, until April 7th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue this hearing until April 7th. Any comments about that? Those in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right. At this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Jim Mogan, who is representing Gary Peterson, to, he's asked to make some comments before the city council. Following his presentation, I will also ask our own city attorney for his comments. Mr. Mogan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you making room for us. I wish that we didn't have to come before you to ask this. Gary Peterson has retained me to help him walk through the process at this point of your city code. And unfortunately, it's because we're not getting through to be able to have the hearing that your code provides for. He had applied for a hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and had been scheduled for that, and that appeal had been denied, or had been canceled, based on an opinion of the city attorney. This all stems from a decision of the Planning Commission regarding a Southwest Minnesota partnership, housing partnership development. They got a CUP for a planned unit development. And I know, I'm new to this, but I know that that was, or has been, or is becoming controversial. And I just want to assure you that what we're asking you tonight has nothing to do, really, with that. The issue that the city attorney, Mr. Ronning, reviewed is regards to a 60-day rule, basically Minnesota statute 1599. It's a, requires that certain zoning decisions, certain land use decisions, have to be made within 60 days. At this point, I'm not coming to you, asking for you to make a determination on 1599. I'll tell you that I disagree with the opinion of the developer's attorney as to the application of 1599. I don't believe, as the developer's attorney believes, that it removes all of your rights, that it somehow allows a developer to institute their wishes, irregardless of the rules or the ordinance under which they're applying. But again, that is not what I'm asking you to consider tonight. Tonight, all I'm asking to consider is to appoint the board, or to call the board, so that we can have our hearing. The decision that was cited, and Mr. Ronning will come and explain it to you further, is a case called Moreno versus the City of Minneapolis. And this is a case, it's very similar to the case that we have before us. And in that case, the Court of Appeals had determined that the application had to be granted, because the procedure hadn't finished within the 60-day period. And that's the penalty under the law, is that the application is approved. Now, it's similar in that it was a CUP for a planned unit development, very similar to our case, and the same situation in which the Planning Commission had made a decision, but the appeals process had not run forward. That isn't being disputed. What I, what, however, in the Minneapolis case, the appeal still went forward. The city council actually reviewed the matter a number of times, sent it back and forth. They had all the opportunities in order to hear what the problems were, to review their own process, to give the neighbors the opportunity to be heard. These were the rights that were granted under their code, and these are the rights that are granted under your code. Your code grants Mr. Peterson and his neighbors the opportunity to be heard regarding the appropriateness of the conditional use permit. Now, the 1599, the 60-day rule, is a blunt instrument. It beats down city council decisions, city codes, on these limited land use decisions. But they don't eliminate all your rights to have your own hearings, to listen to your citizens, or to review your processes. And that's all we're asking you, is to have that hearing. The 1599, if it applies, which again, I disagree whether it will, may make the issue moot. However, your code doesn't match up with 1599. I don't believe you have the intent of removing your citizens' ability to be heard on these matters, or to have the ability to appeal. The problem is, is your code, which was created, I think, three decades ago, has a appeal process that it could potentially extend beyond the 60 days. That needs to be fixed, shortened, but that's not what we're asking for tonight either. Again, all we're asking for is to have the opportunity to be heard before the Board of Planning, or be the Board of Zoning Appeals. In doing that, I do ask that that be done as soon as possible. There are additional time periods that we've hit. Mr. Peterson has been waiting for a month. He heard the day before, a couple of days before the hearing was supposed to happen, that it was canceled, and that was last Monday, a week ago. So, we have, we're trying to move along, we're trying to get these things taken care of, and we need your help in ordering the staff to basically call the meeting. We're wishing that we didn't have to go through this procedure, but I recognize that the law under Moreno is confusing, complicated, and you took, your staff took the most conservative approach possible, and that is the way they did it. We're just asking you to correct that problem, and to order the board to meet. Do you have any questions?
No. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mogan. Mr. Ronning, would you like to offer some comments on the same issue?
I've reviewed the letter that was sent by Mr. Mogan last week, and reviewed the additional case that was cited in his letter, and my opinion has not changed. It's still my opinion that the 60-day rule does apply. The impact of the 60-day rule, as we all know, is that if the final decision hasn't been made by the city, the application by the developer is automatically approved. It's my opinion that that application was automatically approved by the expiration of the 60 days, and that to have a hearing at this time is obviously an exercise in futility. It makes no sense to have a hearing on something that's been approved by the lapse of the 60-day time period. Whether the Board of Zoning Appeals agrees or disagrees with the action that's previously been taken, doesn't make a difference, because the statute specifically states that the conditional use permit is approved by the lapse of the 60 days.
All right. Thank you to both the attorneys for their opinion. Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rich, that 60-day period you're talking about, if I get this straight, it's 60 days from the date of the application, the date they apply. The conditional use permit has to be either approved or denied within that 60 days? And if it's denied, the appeal has to be heard within those 60 days also?
Within the 60 days, or there has to be an extension, which is permitted by the statute. And unfortunately, that didn't happen here, but the statute does provide for either the developer or the city notifying the other party that it's going to be extended 60 days, and then the total time is 120 days. So, it's not as unworkable as Mr. Mogan would want you to believe, because of the fact that you can exercise that right to extend for 60 days.
Have we ever extended one 60 days?
I believe, at least on one prior occasion, there has been.
From what I recall, in the past couple of years, I forget how many appeals we've had, three, four of them, I don't believe one of them has been done within 60 days of the date of application. So, we would have been wrong on all of those, also. One other item, from the date of application was November, I think, 27th. We were going to have a hearing in December, and the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership called and said, "We can't make the December hearing. It's going to have to be another month." My belief is that they did that to delay it 30 days, to assure that they would have this thing approved within January. And because of that, I feel the way Mr. Mogan feels, too, that this appeal should go forward, you know? It may be a moot point, as you say, but at least he'll have his day in court. We could see what would happen, and then they, he and his attorney could take it from there, whether it's just drop the thing, or further it, I don't know. But I think there was a delay tactic on that nonprofit organizations part, and we need the Planning Commission to be aware of this 60-day extension every time an application is made, because it's, if we would have known, if I would have known that, I sure would have advised them of the 60-day extension. I didn't know we had to do that. I thought it was 60 days from the date of the hearing, when it was, when they would approve it. And that's what we've been told by our community development director for, well, since I've been on the council. So, my feeling is we should go ahead with the appeal, and I'd like to hear from the rest of the council, see if they, if anybody agrees or disagrees, or...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Rich a quick question here, does, and then just one or two quick items. In your opinion, does the council have the standing to order the Board of Zoning Appeals to take this matter up?
Yes, I think the council can request that the board consider it.
Okay. But you're saying it's a moot point because, and help me understand that, that's...
I'm saying it's a moot point, because by statute, it's already been approved, because the 60 days has gone by, and there was no extension requested.
So, would your opinion be that if they want to have their day in court, that it would need to be in court, in district court? That would be, that would be their redress?
That would be my opinion, yes.
Okay. Regarding the 60-day rule, and I have before me a copy of a PowerPoint given by the League of Minnesota Cities Land Use Attorneys at, and this is something they have at any number of the seminars that they give, and it does say that a written request related to zoning has to be approved or denied within the 60 days. It can be extended 60 more days with written notice. The third point, this includes all city decision-making, including appeals, to the city council. This is something that the people who would be representing us in any land use issues, any lawsuits against the city, this is what they tell us, that they interpret the statute to mean. And I think they're on fairly solid ground in doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After hearing our attorney's opinion and Mr. Gardner's comments, I still feel that Mr. Peterson was wronged by not knowing about the 60-day extension. I mean, nobody mentioned it at any point in time, as far as I know. Is that correct, Gary? Just, I have this feeling that this thing is being shoved down our throats, and a lot of these things were not just, just didn't happen. They weren't just, it appears that it was planned to go this...
They weren't just, it appears that it was planned to go this way, so that nobody could stop this thing. That's my own feeling, that's my own feeling. I just get that taste in my mouth, and with that said, I would make a motion to direct staff to call the Board of Appeals for Mr. Peterson on that instance, and as soon as possible.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the table, to have the city council call the zoning appeals board for this matter. Further comment about that? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for the gentleman, would, as soon as possible, I presume that you would want that to happen prior to the proposed special meeting of the council on March 31st?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think that would meet the required notice requirements. I don't think there's any way it can be held that quickly.
And a, and a question again for the city attorney. I was going to ask this earlier, my apologies. If there had, if there was to be an extension, that could have been ordered by the city council with their reasons stated in writing as well, correct? For an extension of the 60-day rule?
The extension is available to both the city and to the developer, or applicant.
That didn't necessarily need to be done by staff, though. That could have been done by action of the city council.
Could have been.
Thank you.
Rich, if I could ask, the League of Minnesota Cities' criteria was quoted. Do you agree with that league's criteria? The League of Minnesota Cities, what was quoted, does that fit into your judgment on this?
I think that's consistent with what I just told the council a few minutes ago.
All right. Councilmember DeBleek.
Just a question of Rich as well here now, if, if we go ahead and order the zoning appeals board to meet on this, and the permit has already been issued, and it's been legally issued to them, what are they going to decide? Or what are they gonna, what basis are they gonna have to make a decision on?
Well, I assume they'll listen to the arguments of both sides, and then make whatever findings they're gonna make. And as, again, probably an exercise in futility, but they, they can certainly do it, and then, depending on how they come out on it, either side can take it to court if they want.
And, Rich, this matter could be taken to court at this time? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I believe it can.
All right. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you say "taken to court," Rich, what, in what manner? I mean, what, what can they do? Go to a district judge and ask for, what, overturning?
Order compelling the city to conduct the, the hearing that he's now asking for would be one thing they could ask for.
I guess I'd have one other question of the council in general. I didn't know about the 60-day extension rule. Did anybody in the council know that? Mr. Gardner?
Yeah.
Rick?
I did not. Let's say that's been discussed before, and it's common knowledge, and they can apply for an extension.
I've never heard it. I have no knowledge of it.
All right, we, any other comments about this? There's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. Anybody else have anything to say? The motion and the second is to, Kevin, help me, to convene, or what?
Call for the staff to set a Board of Zoning Appeals hearing on the matter of the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership project.
All right.
The conditional use permit, because that's what was approved.
All right, let's vote, then. Roll call, Kevin?
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
No.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek?
No.
Four ayes, two nays.
The resolution passes. All right, we move on, then. Next on the agenda is the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council, or speak to the council, or the mayor? If not, we will move on to number 10 on the agenda, which is the Finance Committee Report for March 10th, and is it, Mr. Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Item number one was a liquor violation hearing. The police department did compliance checks this winter, and there was two establishments that failed. They were Rick's Royal Steakhouse and Cafe Propolis. Both of the owners were there, and they were sorry that it happened, and it was human error. They discussed with the committee what they would do in the future, and city police chief offered help for their employees to know what to look for. This matter was for information only. Item number two was the School Resource Officers Agreement. The committee reviewed the proposed School Resource Officers Agreement between the school and city. This three-year agreement provides for the placement of three police officers within the school district buildings. The only proposed changes from the previous agreement would be the increase amount paid to the city to cover payroll costs for the three officers. It was moved second and passed to make the following recommendation, and I'll introduce this resolution to approve this agreement with the school.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution for the School Resource Officers Agreement, the police liaison officers. Further comment about this? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I note in the, the agreement that under item two, the school agrees to pay the city the sum of $110,000 per school year. Then it goes up to $120,000 the second year, and $130,000 the third year. Can someone tell me what that's about?
You mean, why it's increasing?
Yeah, why is that?
Do you want to handle that?
Why, why it...
Why does it escalate $10,000 each year?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we oftentimes, when we deal with multi-year contracts, we try to anticipate the increased costs in personal services, salaries, wages, or benefits, and these amounts are simply indicative of my conversations with the school superintendent, in trying to arrive at numbers that would at best recover most of the cost increases annually, but at the same time, not place an unnecessary burden on the school district.
Can I assume, then, that if they are paying $10,000 more per year, per officer, that we would be paying, or for the three officers, that we would also, as a city, be paying an additional $10,000? Is that correct?
We, I think, we're looking at average wage adjustments in the 3% to 4% range, plus benefits.
Okay. So, basically, this is a salary and benefits increase.
Well, it is, but you have to understand that we also have other costs associated with the program, the vehicles that we use, and, and other resources.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments before the vote on this? All right, this is a resolution, it's been motioned and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Item number three was leisure services rates. Staff presented a revision to the schedule of rental rates and fees recently adopted by the council. Most of the rates were pertaining to the Aquatic Center, and I'll introduce this motion to adopt the revised schedule of rental rates and fees for the Aquatic Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to adjust the leisure services rates. Any comments about this? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can someone tell me what the rate differences are, the increases, and again, what are the drivers for the rate increases?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, while Steve is looking for his copy of the resolution, you'll recall that a couple of weeks ago, we adopted a resolution, as we do annually, setting all of our, our rates for different activities. What, I'm not really sure how it happened, but the, the numbers that we had originally proposed for rate increases at the Aquatic Center were less than what the Community Education and Recreation Board had adopted and recommended. What was in the original resolution were numbers that were higher than the 2007 rates, but lower than what community hadn't rec, recommended. So, if you look at that, that resolution, which is about three or four pages long, if you go to the second to the last page, at the middle, you'll see that, the section on the Aquatic Center, and you'll see the revisions in the numbers. For example, the individual season passes are increasing from $69.55 to $73, and then right on down that list. So, it's just that five or six items.
I guess I'm concerned with the current status of our economy, what impact this is going to have on families that have children that want to use that, that pool, and that would be one of my concerns, is why we're increasing those rates.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, you know, the Aquatic Center, like the Civic Center, are not enterprise funds, they're, they're not self-supporting facilities, and we, we try to, again, arrive at some sort of a balance, where we generate some revenues to offset our expenses of, of running the facility, and at the same time, hopefully not place too much of a burden on families and users of the facility. And I would imagine the Community Ed and Rec Board talked about this at some length when they were proposing their new fee schedules for the coming year.
I'd like to ask Mick or Steve, have we had any complaints about our rates, and what do we know about our rates compared to other aquatic centers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when we do studies of rates, we, we look to neighbors that have facilities similar to ours, and not all the facilities have season passes. What we've done is, is create a season pass that, like Mick explained, does, does recoup some of the expenses for that facility, but in the same token, if you're not going to utilize that facility as often as a pass might warrant, you still have the daily rate to, to be able to pay that amount. The facility's open somewhere in the neighborhood of, of 80 days. If you look at maybe attending every third day, that's, that's about 20, 30 times, you know, I, if you're going to use it that much, you're going to pay off. So, these rates are for those people that love to swim. Many of these kids will be out there almost every day, and they'll average a dollar or two per attendance fee versus the, the $4 daily rate that's out there. So, these rates are indeed competitive to what the other facilities are, run by city governments in, in the area.
Do we have scholarship program? Or some type of, do we turn people away from this facility?
We, we have not done scholarships, per se, for this facility, like we do for our other programs. Not to say that there are not opportunities for folks to, to get some assistance for this. We do some special events. As the day wears on, the price goes down, and the twilight rate, we'll have some special events, we'll run some, some cheaper rates out there, but for the most part, these are the rates that people pay to use that facility.
You know, I like that idea of some kind of a, of a assistance to needy families. Perhaps we could just, you know, make a, a general appeal to our, our community, and say that if people want to contribute to the Aquatic Center for that purpose, they are more than welcome to do that, you know, to help scholarship, or, you know, subsidize somebody's family rate, or somebody's yearly ticket, or something. I don't think we would, you know, I know that we would welcome that, if the, if the community, whether it's individuals, families, or businesses wish to do that, please contact the city about that. All right, any other comments about this rate structure? If not, this is a roll call. Kevin?
Yes, it is.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
No.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay.
The resolution passes. Rich?
Item number four was the discussion of library funding. Due to the fact that the individuals that wanted to address the committee were out of town, this was tabled till the next Finance Committee meeting. Item five was for information only, the various reports from the hospital, Rice Trust, Central Minnesota Community Foundation, RAC-8, local option sales tax. And item number six was miscellaneous. Councilman Christensen reported on information he attained regarding the West Winds Project application, and this was for information only. If there are no other questions, I move to file these minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had, at the finance meeting, I'd given some numbers in reference to the West Wind Three development, proposed development. I thought maybe they would have published them. I see they did not, so I'd like to give them presently, just take a few minutes. My comments were at the end of the meeting, that if you fall in money, you can usually find out what, what a project is about. And this nonprofit organization that's proposing this development has got some interesting numbers in their financials that they submitted to the state, and if other council members would like a copy, I can give you one afterwards. It is purported to be a $6 million project. Close to $900,000 of that $6 million is fees, not related to land or building. The nonprofit organization that's proposing this project, their, their developer's fee, now, this is a fee that goes to their office, not engineering, marketing, surveying, sewer water, appraisals. Their fee is $576,000, $576,000, which is about 10%, about 3% higher than anybody else that would do a development similar to this. The per square foot costs on these houses that they propose to build out there come to $179.54 per square foot for a slab home with no brick, vinyl siding, inexpensive windows. Typically, a home like that would run, with land included, maybe $110, $150, $125 in that area, anywhere else in the city. Which brings the total up per unit, per side of twin home now, of $215,451. This is all public information, and it's been through the administrator's office. Matter of fact, that's where I requested, requested this information. So, you can see that their fees are relatively high, and my, my own feeling is that this project is not for humankind, it is not for low and low-low income people. It's for one purpose only, that's to keep that office open. They also mention, at the, the last page of their financial request, is some donations and incentives from the city, which I don't think anybody here knows about, or the Planning Commission didn't. And there's $8,000 request or incentive for municipal development fees, $8,000 for a specific assessment. assessments or infrastructure. They want $9,000 from the city for fast-track permitting and approvals, and $9,000 for WAC and SAC reductions, of which I know nothing about. I don't think they discussed it with the city or the planning commission when it went before them. And I think this information should have been available to city staff, to the planning commission, to the city council, before any decision was made at all. One other comment, and that's on their questionnaire they had to fill out to the state, is grant writing is a science. You write the, if you put the right words in the right places, you'll get grants, you'll get money, it will show up. Bev knows that. They answered a lot of these questions, in my opinion, to get the money for this particular project. And one of the questions is, are you targeting any particular market or underserved populations? And they're targeting a religion. Once again, the planning commission did not know this, staff didn't know it, and the council members didn't know it. Again, I would be happy to give you copies of these, the council members, if you request them afterwards. You can read them in your leisure. And that was the end of my comments at the meeting. I will, the minutes have already been moved to file, I guess.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to understand a little more the religion thing, that they're targeting a religion. I'm trying to understand that.
As I said, I'll give you a copy of this at the end of the meeting, you can read it and...
Well, but you've said that there's...
Mr. Gardner, I'm not going to discuss this in public. You read it first, okay? You read this, and then we'll discuss it. This isn't the time and place to do that.
But what I'm hearing you say is that you've alleged that they're targeting a particular group, not just by income, not just by need, but just by religion. So my question to you would be, is this the underlying thing that is driving all the opposition to this project, sir?
Who are you asking?
I'm asking you, sir.
You read it, and you form your own opinion.
Nothing further? I think, since you've raised this, it comes out onto the public table, so it becomes public information. So I think, you know, this needs to be available to the council members, as you suggested, but it also is public information now that it's been brought up at this council table. So please make sure our city clerk has it, so that if there are requests at City Hall, he can distribute it there, too.
All right, are there any other comments about this before we file the minutes of the meeting, of the finance committee meeting? Is that the motion now to file the minutes, Kevin?
Yes, it is.
All right, those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next is the Public Works Safety Committee report for March 11th. Ron, are you handling it?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our meeting was held March 11th, 2008, and the first item on our agenda was the Becker Market request. Bev Doherty presented a request from the Wilmer Design Center to once again offer the Becker Market every Thursday for the months of June through September. They plan to offer farmers' products, homemade items for sale to the public, similar to the last couple of years. I believe this is the third year, correct? Yes.
Their request is the same as last year, blocking off Becker Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Streets, and the time of the market will be from 3:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. on those They plan, again, to allow for a not, is it a 20-foot strip? Or 20-foot strip for emergency vehicles. She also requested permission to block Fourth Street between Litchfield and Becker Avenues on Thursday, August 14th only, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. for their first annual fundraiser entitled Dinner in the Street. Dinner will be served and vendors open until such time as the bar and other activities end. Our administrator raised the question of liability insurance once again, which is required by ordinance, and licensing similar events termed as, quote, "street fairs," unquote. The past two years, a permit has not been obtained for the Becker Market. The city has assumed all liability. The committee discussed the situation, decided to bring it to the full council tonight, or full as we can be, without a recommendation, and until further review by staff and city and attorney. And I would ask at this time, if Mick, you or the attorney have reviewed this further and have some recommendations or some answer for this?
I'll ask Kevin to talk a little bit about it from the insurance side perspective.
Mayor Heitke, members of the council, I have not attended any of these meetings in the whole three years that they've come before the Public Works Public Safety Committee, but as the department head in charge of licensing, and also the department head for risk management insurance, I felt it was important to speak that this is following a unique course, one that is very inconsistent with our own ordinances, and one that I'm not certain you are aware of the liability that we're allowing here. It seems like this gets off to an approval rating that doesn't follow through various categories. This is a street fair by any other name that I know of, and we have ordinances for that. We have others in the community that run street fairs, and they become a clear applicant, and that applicant covers the insurance that we require. Certainly in this event, there are vendors who have some insurance. From the vendors that I've seen there, I would certainly suspect that not all of them do. But it certainly does not cover some of the risks that could be inherent with having an activity on a public street. In any unique case where a car may come through there and hit people, whether it's things that you read about senior citizens hitting the gas pedal instead of the brake, a drunk, someone inebriated going through the barricades, there is no insurance standing in place to cover these events. The people at fault are certainly not the bread vendor or some other agricultural crop vendor that's there, whether they have insurance or not insurance. That's not going to cover these situations. So in effect, by letting this continue to go through as this, without a peer applicant standing, setting forth with their insurance, I think virtually we're insuring it. And I guess as a staff recommendation, that's not a good thing, and it follows, secondly, to be inconsistent with other things that are equally deemed "street fairs." So with that, we just bring that to your attention. The city attorney could also make comment regarding some of the liability or exposure that may be there, following this continued path.
Rich, could you give us an opinion on that?
Kevin's comments follow the discussion that I had with Kevin on this subject, and what he's indicated to you is 100% accurate and does reflect my position on it. The activity does have obvious risk for the reasons he has enumerated. That should be of concern to you, that there be insurance coverage, other than possibility of the city's coverage. If there is no coverage under the city's policy, then there's no coverage, period, to protect anybody that would be injured, or worse yet, killed as a result of a runaway vehicle, or whatever, as Kevin has indicated. Equally important to me is that everybody should be treated the same. If we're going to require permits of one organization to do the same or similar activity, then there's no justification not to require it of every organization. It's elementary constitutional law, it's, you know, equal protection of the law, it's still a valid constitutional provision.
If somebody were to, a car were to come in and have an accident and kill somebody, but doesn't the car's insurance come into play there, too?
At the next meeting, the chief will be giving his annual report, and I'll be giving my annual report, and the figures on the people that are driving without insurance are staggering, and they go up every year.
So if we would have had a, the past two years, nothing happened, you know, like I would, but if something would have, what, and there was no insurance on the automobile, it falls directly to the city? Because it's a city street, city curb?
My guess would be that they would make a claim against the sponsoring group and the city, and sue both.
So against the vendors, too, or the...
I don't think they would sue the vendors unless the vendor was the cause of the problem. In a runaway vehicle, I don't see how you can say that any of the vendors are a cause of the runaway vehicle.
Well, it leaves us with a question here. What do we do? I mean, it's...
Well, before the council does anything, I'd like to ask Bev Doherty, who's in charge of Becker Market, if you want to make some comments about this?
Nancy?
Nancy?
Yes.
Do you want to?
Yes.
They represent Becker Market, so why don't you make your comments?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Nancy Johnson, co-owner of Culinary Seasons, and I'm also on the Becker Market Committee. And on a lighter note, I'd just like to talk about some of the benefits of the Becker Market as we see it. And as you mentioned, this is in its third year, and we just wanted to point, like to point out, that the Becker Market draws probably 20 vendors from about 25 surrounding towns to the market, and that, along with the customers, that number would be increased. But we provide a venue for local growers, and entertainers, and artisans, and it features, as you mentioned, locally grown foods, bakery, home canned foods, vegetables, chickens, beef, local foods prepared on-site, and handmade products. And we were just very delighted with the participation of all the numerous vendors that we've had, and the artisans, and the customers that they drew in search of these locally crafted items. And we feel that it allows the customer to get to know the person who grows their food, bakes their bread, and it affords them an opportunity to thank them for all their good work. But we strive really to expand the market, to encompass many more issues that naturally come from the field-to-fort concept. And to kick off our season this year, we would like to plan a health fair, and we'll be working with local health programs to do this. And there's also opportunities in education that we can offer in weekly food demonstration using different items from the market, and offering food samples, recipe handouts with their nutritional values. And we're also planning on collaborating with the 4-H and their members, and, you know, in a like endeavor. So for those, too, who grow produce through some of the community gardens in the area, like the High School Yes Program, the YMCA Children's Projects, and the community ed gardens at the senior citizens, and also Mr. Gesh's land, they can come and sell their produce if they have an overabundance. I know some are given to the food shelf, and some are, the YMCA, you know, sells to their clients, but if they have any extras, we have welcomed them to come and sell at the market. And we think it's important that through these gardens, the youth can learn more about, you know, the food sources, they can feel more connected to the land, perhaps, and learn healthier food options. But in buying locally, we feel we not only support the local community, but we save energy so that the food product doesn't have to travel cross-country. In this day and age, that's huge. But we think that the market, too, is a catalyst to bring different cultural groups together as vendors and/or customers, and we wish to encourage the youth and the seniors, too, to join in in the activities that we'll be offering in the community spirit of the market. But in summation, actually, the Becker Market is just joining a movement that we see that's growing, you know, nationwide, and that is one that we have a growing awareness of, you know, our food gathering habits, our health, and the natural environment, and how our daily activities affect that. And we should, we would like also to learn about experience and to appreciate, you know, each other's culture. So we plan to continue to ride this wave of opportunity, and I thank you all.
Bev?
Mr. Mayor and councilpeople, thank you. Since I found this out, that this was an issue a week ago, I've had an opportunity to talk to the state extension director about what is done at other markets, and it really, I know you're classing it as a street fair, but it really is a public market, a growers' market, no matter what you call it, that's what it is. And I've also talked to the manager of a market in northern Minnesota that's been operating for 10 years, and I've also talked to the local insurance agent, and we've also had a Wilmer Design Center board meeting since the committee meeting. And it's my request tonight that you approve the closing of the street for Becker Market and for our first annual joint fundraiser with WHAM, which is that one-block area on August 14th, contingent on our complying with the insurance, liability insurance that you're asking for. I know from the state that, they say that many communities have a state blanket, or a city blanket policy in place, so that Wilmer would have that. In northern Minnesota, they buy their own liability insurance, but it is the direction of the Wilmer Design Center, that Becker Market continue, no matter what those contingencies are.
All right, let me be clear here, Bev, or help me with your statement. You said that the market would be in compliance with what the city is requesting?
Mm-hmm. If that's what's necessary.
You would buy your own insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Kevin, do you have some questions about that? About what you're saying and what Bev is saying?
Well, not at this point. You know, I guess it's just, to me, prudent that some applicant steps forward, you know, I realize there's a real menagerie out there with growers' markets and farmers' markets and so forth, but this is, I mean, most of the farmers' markets you would look at are not on the public street, where that exposure is there, they're off on a parking lot and so forth. A lot of people sell their crops free, not, a city can't really charge a permit, but again, they sell them on private property, and they're not, the exposure's there. So any avenue here that we could cover up this exposure, and yet be consistent with all other street fairs. And then I want to point out, too, that the street fair really is where there's either admission fee, or there's a profit or a gain there. Well, there's no admission fee, but there's certainly profit and gains going on there, so I think just by our ordinances, that step should be followed.
Let me make it clear on profit. The Becker Market, although the design center does do fundraising, and we do make some profit to run the operation, Becker Market just barely clears, but we know how important it is, and so if that's what we need to do, we'll provide the insurance.
Bev, you said you had a chance to talk to some insurance agents?
Yes.
Do you have a parameter of what this kind of coverage would be?
I have everything from $1,000 for the whole summer, which happens in northern Minnesota, to the director of Extension Services in Minnesota, where the city issues the blanket policy for all nonprofit operations in the city.
Kevin, do we have any kind of a blanket coverage like that?
We do not have it currently. We can talk to our agent, Mr. Chad Christensen, to see what those options are with the league, and what the cost is, and that could be a decision, back to finance, perhaps, but I, we're not aware of that.
Let me just, I'm just posing this, but if the city had a blanket coverage, could any of these groups, like the J.C.'s, and the Wilmer Fests, and Sit in the Mai, all these festivals that kind of use our streets for a little while, could they all tie into a blanket coverage?
Well, it sounds like that. I'm unfamiliar with that animal completely. Not-for-profit status would certainly be checked out on everybody, and that isn't always a reality. People say they are, but they haven't applied for paperwork anywhere.
Right. Would, I think, I think...
Right. Would, I think, I think the city should do that. I think we should find out what this is and what it costs and, you know, can, can local groups tie into it? You know, can they pay the fee that the city is being charged to access that blanket coverage? That could, that could be quite helpful to everybody. Bev, go ahead.
Several opinions at the Wilmer Design Center board meeting were that overall, it would cost less if the city would carry the blanket policy. You'd always have the option of approving an activity or not, which you do now with a permit, but that the overall cost would be less instead of, and I'm really speaking for all the nonprofits, because I know WilmerFest has been here already and that's what brought this question up. But to be a progressive city, it would be wonderful if, if there was a possibility of a blanket policy that included everyone, that brings good things to the city.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Bev. Or Ron, you go ahead and then council members, if you have some questions.
I guess I'd open to the council for questions. I mean, I, I would like to investigate the blanket coverage also. We know it would be less expensive for all these, and they could somehow fund it. And then we would be covered and we wouldn't have to have these people coming without insurance. Rest of the council?
Councilmember Gardner, then, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would move the request of the Wilmer Design Center to block off Becker Avenue as they've done the last two years for their once-a-week market. And I would also move their-
Motion out of time.
Okay.
Second.
Put it all in one?
Same activity they?
Yeah, same, yeah. And then this would just be Fourth Street between Litchfield and Becker on Thursday, the fourteenth, for their joint fundraiser with the multicultural marketplace.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the permit for the Becker Market and the April fourteenth activity. Councilmember Dockin, or Mick, you, we got a problem here?
Need to be contingent upon their insurance.
Contingent on having appropriate insurance coverage.
I have, I have no problem moving that.
All right. That's part of the motion.
Whether it's through the design center or the research that we do on some blanket coverage.
Sure. Councilmember Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to go back to when Mr. Halliday and Mr. Ronnie spoke. You said consistently and treating organizations the same. You're making reference to the WilmerFest activities and to the J.C.'s, that they need to, they being Becker Market, needs to be in the same category as WilmerFest and the J.C.'s with respect to liability coverage.
And that is correct. And then my comment about a fee or a gain is there to let you know that that's requirement in the ordinance. So something like Tuesday at Must Be Bethel has neither of those and would not need the permit activity. But, you know, you're doing that with the J.C.'s, we need to, we need to be consistent on that line.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, there are other groups too, you know, like Sit and the Mai, the Norwegian Parade, you know, there's no profit involved there. And then we do have a variety of groups that use like our parks, periodically churches, you know, they use our parks, all kinds of groups that are out there that somehow, you know, this probably is becoming a bigger question. Any other comments about the motion? Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How does crazy days fit into this, when the downtown and they go out and put their wares on the sidewalks and is that similar or are they covered there? Are the city?
I think there's a comment somewhere in the ordinance about crazy days where it's allowed. I can't remember, but it is not a permit from everybody from being on the sidewalk. In the spring, outside of crazy days, we have an opportunity for someone to set up a table on the public right-of-way, and that requires a zero-cost, hold harmless permit to be signed, such as a table, putting coffee out and so forth. They come and they get their permit from us, and it's an acknowledgement of the hold harmless, and that activity goes all summer long.
Do we have something in writing with, you know, like Stacy used to do that, I think Porter?
That's in writing, when they do that.
It is in writing.
Yep. And we secure those when we hear about them. Stacy was consistent every year, took care of it in April, so he was always prepared for the year.
How about like the band in the park, Rice Park, you know, what, is that, they fall into the same thing then, or?
Without a fee, they do not need that insurance.
So then we're covering them?
There's no gain. So that's uncovered by that ordinance.
But if something happens there, it's a city park, it's city property, it falls under our insurance, I'm assuming. If somebody slips and breaks an ankle or something, I mean, that's-
Well, most likely, but then we're, we're kind of held at that criteria of that fault. I mean, generally, if you just fall over, we don't pay. So, and that's why we monitor sidewalks and other things so well. If they're up an inch and a half and people trip, we're at fault. But if they just want to fall over in front of a local automotive store downtown or something, nothing's going to happen that way.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
All right, anyone else? Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item number two had to do with the CAT bus shelter lease and general services agreement. Thank you for coming, Bev.
Thank you.
And Nancy. Anyway, the bus shelter for CAT, the committee reviewed the lease agreement and the general services agreement for a CAT bus shelter at the corner of Fourth Street and Becker Avenue Southwest. We discussed the maintenance responsibilities, snow removal and other insurance issues. Snow removal and general maintenance will be done by the city, as spelled out in Exhibit B with your minutes. The structure will be owned by CAT with the city leasing them the land for a term of three years and automatically renewing for an additional three-year term thereafter unless either party gives the other party ninety days written notice if it's intent to terminate the lease at the end of any three-year term. After some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will move the motion to approve both the lease and general services agreements and authorize the mayor and our city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this lease for the new bus shelter and the lease arrangements. Further comment? Kevin, simple motion?
Resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Our third item had to do with the addition of some of our streets to the state aid system. Due to the growth and additional street infrastructure in the city of Wilmer, we are under the maximum allowable municipal state aid street mileage. Staff proposed adding point nine-four miles of street to the state aid system. The two segments proposed to be added are, number one, Lakeland Drive southeast from Wilmer Avenue southeast to Trot Avenue, and the second one is Twenty-Second Street southwest from Nineteenth Avenue southwest to Fifteenth Avenue southwest. The district state aid engineer has approved these additions and staff recommends that these areas to complete the arterial and collector systems. Our committee reviewed the proposed area, and once again, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and there are two resolutions here, and I will introduce the first one, and that is to establish the first section, Lakeland Drive southeast from Wilmer Avenue southeast to Trot Avenue southeast as a municipal state aid highway, as presented by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to establish state aid highways as presented. The first motion, any comment about that? Roll call, Kevin?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll introduce the second resolution, and that would be for Twenty-Second Avenue, excuse me, Twenty-Second Street southwest from Nineteenth Avenue southwest to Fifteenth Avenue southwest to be established as a municipal state aid highway, as presented by staff also.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the second resolution establishing state aid highways, as it was just described. Further comment about that? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Before we go on, I think it'd be important that, I see Mel isn't here, but maybe Mick, you can explain to the public the value of these state aid streets? Are you able to do that without Mel?
Well, Mel asked me, what are the chances of them asking?
Well, we can wait.
I said, don't worry, it won't happen. But, well, the significance is that as our community continues to grow, we're able to receive from the state additional funds to help maintain what we designate as our state aid streets. There are municipal state aid streets, county state aid streets, and then of course, you have your highway systems that cross through your community, and each one has a funding source. Our community has grown to the point over the last few years, and when I say grown, I'm talking about we've added additional street miles. And that has resulted in our ability to designate one more mile. And if you looked at the two, at the map and the two designated areas, they totaled just short of a mile. And that will mean that we'll receive annually an additional, about eleven thousand dollars for street maintenance.
Super. Thank you. Item number four was to accept project number zero seven one three and authorize the final payment. The request for a payment, number zero seven one three, was the interim improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, and that consisted of excess flow pump replacement to carry the plant through until the new plant is constructed. And this was presented. The pump was tested and placed into service. The final amount due to the contractor, who is Shank Constructors, is the retainage in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred ten dollars. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, and I will move to recommend the resolution that we accept project zero seven one three and its final payment to Shank Constructors in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to accept project number oh seven one three and then issue final payment to Shank Constructors in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Further comment about that? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Item number five had to do with the wastewater treatment plant relocation project. The monthly report of Feb, from February from Mr. Holmes and Donahue and Associates, this was for information only. Mr. Holmes briefed the committee on the various activities that took place in February two thousand eight related to this project, the relocation project. The trial for the pipe corridor acquisition has concluded. The phosphorus trade issue has been discussed with the city of Mankato, and a summary will be presented to our committee in the near future. The water pollution control revolving fund loan application has also been prepared and submitted to the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. As far as construction activity, contract administration continues for phase one and two of the interceptor projects. That was for information only, as is item number six, that had to do with the Garfield School Detention Pond Meeting. Our administrator informed the, the committee that there will be a neighborhood informational meeting on April eighth for the Garfield School Detention Pond. That would be anybody interested in wanting to know more about it. April eighth, Mick, I believe it's at seven P.M.?
Yes, sir. We're going to have the meeting, I believe, at the fire station.
At the fire station. So April eighth, seven P.M. at the fire station for the Garfield Pond, Detention Pond information. If there are no questions, I would move to file this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. I have a question. Craig, did you want to make any comments about the wastewater treatment plant, other than what's in the minutes of the, of this committee yet?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you have questions, I can, I can answer them.
Anybody have questions about the wastewater treatment plant project? Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with Mr. Holmes earlier today on the telephone, and if it's okay, I'd like for him to maybe talk a little bit about this phosphorus trade. I know it's going to be discussed later on, but-
Yeah, that'll go through Public Works, Public Safety, and it's, I think it's, meeting's been moved to April first. The phosphorus trade matter is, is a means by which the city of Wilmer can meet its obligation to reduce phosphorus by buying some credits from another community on the Minnesota River that already complies. And the reason we're considering this is to make sure that we don't have need to provide expensive interim treatment should we not have our new plant operational fully by November two thousand ten. As we continued with our corridor acquisition, it became at one point not certain if we would be able to move ahead. And this trade, when you see, when you see that before council, you'll find that that trade will be a much less expensive alternative than to provide phosphorus removal before our new plant is up and running. Does that-
So it's a mitigation process?
It's a way we can comply with the requirements of MPCA without expensive treatment of our own before our new plant is ready.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Christ-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might add that when our new facility's up and running, Wilmer may be selling some of these credits to other cities that are falling behind.
There will very, very possibly be other communities that have those same requirements we have that can't meet them and will need to buy some phosphorus credits.
Craig, you've been out the legislature, I have a different question here, but it relates to Donahue and the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, there is funding in the House bonding bill for the wastewater treatment plant, but there's no funding in the Senate bonding bill. Now, that means it goes to conference committee, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you, do you know when conference committee takes place? Is it sooner or later? I, I don't know what the process is there.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know what those dates are. Do you, Mick?
Okay. Are you hearing anything at the legislature? You know, do you-
I have not heard anything from the legislature or our lobbyists.
Okay. Okay, we just got a, a report from him that, you know, in the last week or so, that I think, a written report. It was, we could, I think that just came through, so.
Well, he sends out, and I include him in my Friday mailings, but I thought, Mr. Mayor, that in his report last week, he indicated that on the Senate side, there were some dollars put in. Did you see that, Steve? Or was it the House?
It was the House, only the House side. Here, I'll hand that to you. You've got glasses on, I don't.
The Senate bill, as of today, contains eight hundred thousand for Grass Lake, two point three million for renovations at Ridgewater College, five million from the WIF program, and two million dollar, for the wastewater treatment plant, and two million dollars from the TMDL, that's the grant.
That's one of our grants, that's one of our-
Programs. And that's for the phosphorus treatment, correct?
That's part of it, yes.
Part of it. But it had not, as of late Friday, included anything for the Veterans Home.
All right.
So there's money in the bonding bill.
On both sides.
On both sides, the House and the Senate.
All right.
But as we all know, the governor has a lower target than the House and the Senate had, and so that may or may not, not impact the outcome of the conference committee report, which I think is probably scheduled to take place in the next week or so.
Okay, thanks, Craig. You know, we haven't had either Representative Junkie or Senator Gimsey in here yet this winter to speak to us. I, I would certainly encourage the opportunity to have them come before the council and give a presentation, answer a few questions if they, their schedule would allow it.
Yeah, well, that's always a tough part of it. But I'll, I'll see what I-
Yeah, let's extend an invitation. I think it would be good to hear from them. All right, we're down, let's see, did we, did we have a motion to file the minutes here?
Yes, but we haven't really-
Okay, any other comments here? Those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? That carries. Next is a consideration of a Civic Center special event permit for on-sale liquor license. Blue hair and on the green. Kevin?
Mayor Heitke, members of the council, as in previous years, the Civic Center rents space to the West Central Builders Association, and there's a show again this year on April four, five, and six. And on- And on Friday, April fourth, uh, the association plans to offer alcohol to its members after closing hours, when all the patrons have gone home. And the special event permit is required, and they have to choose a vendor, and blue hair and on the green has applied for that permit, and they've listed, uh, two employees that are required in the ordinance to be on site. So, everything is in order for this, uh, April fourth on-sale liquor permit, and it is staff's recommendation that we approve the permit.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Council?
Move to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the permit for on-sale liquor license holder, blue hair and on the green, out of the Civic Arena, April fourth. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockett.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a consideration of a final plat called the Landmark Business Park. Mick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Landmark Business Park is a commercial plat consisting of nine lots and two outlots. It's being developed by Chad Munson. It's located on East Highway twelve, south and east of the American. As the executive summary, uh, explains, the plat will be accessed by, uh, Twenty-Fourth Street Southeast and Twenty-Fifth Street Southeast, as well as Oxford Drive Southeast. And the plat's been downsized since, um, its original concept, it's being proposed to be developed in phases. The Planning Commission has approved the plat with the condition that reapportionment of the assessments be completed or paid in full prior to the final plat recording, and it's staff's recommendation that the council approve the final plat for Landmark Business Park.
Thank you, Mick. Council?
So, move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the Landmark Business Park final plat. Questions or comments? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mick, the, which one is the outlet here, or outlot? I, I count ten lots, or one through four and one through six. Is it one on block two, or...
There's an outlot, A.
I see, outlot A, sure. So, there's ten and not nine lots, then? Correct? You'd mentioned nine.
Outlot B is right in the middle, the big square in the middle.
It's really eleven lots, I suppose. So, ten lots plus the outlot.
Two outlots.
Okay, A and B, I see, sure.
Yep.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Any other questions? Those in favor of approving this final plat, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next is a consideration of a right-of-way plat for Fifth Street Southeast. Mick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this one is relatively simple. It's the, um, plat for the, uh, area needed to construct the connection of Fifth Street from Wilmer Avenue down to, um, uh, almost nineteenth, I guess. Uh, the, uh, the Planning Commission has approved, uh, has considered and approved the filing of the plat, and, uh, it's staff's recommendation that the council approve the right-of-way plat for filing.
Thank you.
So, move.
We have a motion and a second to approve this, uh, right-of-way plat for Fifth Street Southeast. Comment? Uh, just a question, Mick, the, the, the northern edge of this covers part of that drainage ditch. Do they, then, what do they do with that? Do they put a big concrete tube in there and build over the top of it, or what? Is that, is that how they handle it? All right. Any other comments? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next is a consideration of a request to vacate a portion of transmission line easement.
See now, uh, Mr. Mayor, Bruce and Megan told me there wouldn't be any questions on these plats either. They were so simple. The Wilmer Municipal Utilities, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is requesting, uh, two partial easement releases of two blanket easements, and these easements are both outside the city limits, and they're being requested because of an exchange in property rights or ownership. Um, as the maps indicate, I guess you didn't get a map, did you? Uh, one of the, one of the sites is, uh, near Priam, and it's actually, um, in excess of four thousand feet away from, you know, any lines in that area. And the second release is for a property that's on Fifteenth Street Southwest, uh, just on the north side of the bypass, and it's in an area that's outside of the, uh, city limits as well. Uh, the Planning Commission has reviewed these requests and is recommending release of the easements, and staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution setting a public hearing for the April seventh regular council meeting date.
All right. Introduce that, um, resolution, Mr. Mayor, to set a public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing for April seventh regarding this request to vacate a portion of transmission line easements. Any other comment about this? Councilmember Dockett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what does, what's the significance of four thousand three hundred feet away from the line? Which line are we talking about?
Uh, the power line, but I don't know what the significance is.
Okay, so it is the power line.
Other than, uh, back when these easements were first secured, they would get the easements throughout the entire section. And so, I suppose the significance of this particular piece of land that's being proposed for new ownership is far removed from the actual location of the line and won't have any impact on the MUCs or the power company's use of it.
So, it isn't, the line has nothing to do with the township and the city, um, line? In other words, when they use that term, four thousand three hundred feet, that's, I'm wondering what that means?
I think it just, uh, is an indication that the area in the section where there was this blanket easement is far removed from where the power line actually goes through the section.
So, it has nothing to do with complying with our building codes, should they be out there in that area? Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner, then, DeBlick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just, uh, for information, this is an item that was in the, uh, municipal util, uh, excuse me, the Planning Commission minutes, uh, that we approved earlier tonight under their, uh, item number four, and perhaps some of the questions that are being asked could be, uh, if not found there, then certainly they could be asked at that hearing.
The, the whole, the entire matter will be explained in greater detail during the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember DeBlick?
I was just gonna make a comment. This item was discussed at the municipal utility meeting, which I attended, and as Mr. Schmidt had stated, these easements were blanketed across an entire section or larger areas when power lines were initially cited by the power companies earlier on, and the utilities acquired these lines. Now, the, the line they're talking about here is the power line itself. So, uh, this property that, which has an easement on it is, you know, almost, um, what would that be, three-quarters of a mile away from where the line actually is? There's no need to have a power easement for that particular line on this piece of property. And before the property can be sold or a loan granted by a financing company, I believe...
Clean title.
They need a clean title, and to have that, this easement that's being requested to be released. And that, that is, uh, what the issue, the issue is, so, um, and it should be explained at the public hearing, but in this, um, summary here, the, the line that is being talked about is the power line.
Thank you, Bruce, for that explanation. Anything else? If not, uh, those in favor of, oh, yeah, that's a roll call. Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Dockett.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. We'll go to miscellaneous, then to council committee meeting dates, and then the fire department report. Uh, Councilmember Gardner, you wanted to talk about a special council meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would, uh, like to bring to the council a consideration of a special council meeting on March thirty-first. We, uh, at our last meeting, we talked about trying to find a, uh, a date and a time that would work for, uh, discussing the issues relating to, uh, our street improvements projects plan. And, uh, I'm suggesting the, uh, thirty-first, uh, and suggesting a meeting here on that date at five o'clock in the afternoon.
Anybody want to second that?
Second?
We have a motion and a second for a special city council meeting for March thirty-first at five P.M. here in the council chambers, and the purpose of the meeting?
To, uh, discuss the, uh, uh, issues related to the, uh...
Street improvements.
Street improvement plan.
All right.
And, and the primary thing there, Mr. Mayor, of course, is that it requires, uh, a vote of, uh, seven members of the council to, uh, to approve that plan.
All right. Any comment about that, uh, motion? If not, those in favor of that, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Um, we have a meeting coming up on April eighth. What, this was talked about earlier, at the fire station, it's, uh, regarding the Garfield Detention Pond, April eighth at seven P.M. Anybody with questions or concerns about the, uh, issue of the Garfield Detention Pond, uh, the meeting will be at the Fire Hall in the training room. Council committee meeting dates, uh, finance, does anybody know?
Monday, the twenty-fourth.
Finance, March twenty-fourth at four forty-five. Public Works, Public Safety?
As Craig had mentioned earlier, April first, four forty-five.
April first, four forty-five, Public Works, Public Safety. Community Development?
Community Development, uh, March twenty-seventh, Thursday, four forty-five.
March twenty-seventh, four forty-five, Community Development. Labor?
No meeting.
Um, I have a, an announcement here from our chief of police that there is a citywide cops meeting, uh, on Tuesday, March eighteenth, beginning at seven P.M. at the Wilmer Senior Citizen Center on North Highway seventy-one. The topic for the meeting is heart attack survival, how churches, businesses, and other facilities can obtain and use an automatic external defibrillator, or an AED. Members from the Caneyouac County's AED Coalition will be present to demonstrate and answer questions. Again, Tuesday, March eighteenth, uh, that'd be tomorrow night at the Wilmer, Wilmer Senior Citizen Center at seven P.M. Uh, this picture was handed out, Mick. Is there any discussion on this? All right. And then Becker Market had a handout. Uh, at this time, then, I think we're ready to go with the department report. I'd like to call on our, uh, city fire chief, uh, Marv Kelvin, to give us his annual report. Welcome, Marv.
Thank you, Mayor. And council members, I'd like to present the annual report for the fire department to you. And, uh, this year, I'll do it a little different than last year. Last year, if you recall, we did a PowerPoint presentation, and, uh, we did not get that put together. Actually, we had it ready, but the new technology wasn't up yet, and we didn't want to, uh, project it over here, so we're just gonna do it, uh, the old-fashioned way, if you will. So, again, a little bit about the Wilmer Fire Department. Again, we're a paid-on-call fire department. We have, uh, three full-time staff members, and the rest of the people are all paid-on-call firefighters. And, uh, we are very fortunate in the fact that we do have adequate number of firefighters. A number of fire departments do have a problem with recruiting and retain, and retaining their people, and in Wilmer, we have not had that problem. We have a number of different ways that our fire department is called out. We have battalion calls. We do weather watch to assist, uh, emergency management and watching for tornadoes or severe weather coming into our community. We also assist with mutual aid with other departments. We have special teams. We have a hazardous materials team, and, uh, that's run by Rick Claveter, and, uh, they go out, if there's any hazardous materials incident within the county, uh, they'll respond on that, or if they're requested to do mutual aid in other areas, they'll also assist with that. Our technical rescue team is coordinated by Captain Mike Schrader with the fire department, and that team does, uh, things as far as like confined space entries, uh, above-grade, below-grade, uh, things that would happen, and, uh, they go out and assist with those particular things. In the last year, it's been made, uh, known to us that our confined space, we were not up to snuff in our training, or, uh, people were not equally trained for the confined space, so, uh, we will be conducting some training with that. Hennepin County Technical College will be coming out, uh, in April to do that training for us, and, uh, we will then have all of our people up and trained on the confined space, and we'll be able to offer that to our, uh, our business in town. And then, again, a full department call would be a fire call of any sort to where the fire department was needed, and we'd need a lot of resources. Uh, we've got a few things there as far as our full-time staff, and Tara, Rick, and myself continue to, uh, staff the office. Uh, a little bit about the duties of the fire chief, and then the history of the fire chiefs, and, uh, that has not changed. Uh, next page I'd turn you to would be, uh, page six, and there we did have a change in, uh, positions. Travis Belasco took over as the secretary of the fire department, and what that means is basically the, when the firefighters, we do our roll call, those types of things, the secretary's responsible for that. Chad Johnson had held that position for about four or five years prior to that. He resigned in, on June thirtieth, and then Travis took it over. Chad had some other things that had come up in his life, and, uh, he needed some time, uh, to kind of sort that out, and Travis stepped up for that position. We do, then, on page seven, have a list of all of our firefighters, along with their years of service. I'd just point out to you that our average years of service in the Wilmer Fire Department is twelve point eight years. Again, we feel very fortunate of that. Our senior member is Gary Norstein, of course, and then, uh, we do have our six firefighters that we put on a year ago, and, uh, they completed their rookie training and their one-year, uh, probationary firefighting, and now we're full members of the fire department. We had two firefighters resign in two thousand and seven. That was Lon Nielsen and Steve Stein. In addition to that, on, uh, December thirty-first of the, uh, two thousand and six, uh, Jim Miller resigned from the department. Uh, so, with those two people resigning, we had forty-five years of experience that left us at, with, at that time, and then with Jim Miller resigning, that was another twenty years, so we had, we lost forty-five years of experience in the fire department, uh, basically in about a one-month period of time. Our younger firefighters are picking up the slack, if you will, uh, but, uh, that's knowledge that leaves the department, that you can never regain that knowledge. And, uh, when we have our firefighters leave, uh, really, we do no formal city presentation to them. Uh, it's just service that they give, uh, willingly. Uh, they do, uh, receive minimal compensation, uh, for an hourly rate, and then they do receive a pension of four thousand dollars a year for your service. After, uh, twenty years, they get a full pension, uh, less than twenty years. It's a, uh, graduated number downward, but you have to put on at least, uh, five years in order to get any pension. So, again, we are, uh, we are at full strength. We're at, uh, forty-four firefighters, and we feel pretty fortunate to, again, uh, have good numbers of our firefighters. In two thousand and seven, we outlined some of the big events that we did. Of course, our pancake feed is always a big deal, uh, but I'd like to point out, again, the storytime at the fire station. Again, we had over eleven hundred people that came to the fire department that evening, uh, children, adults. Uh, this year, we put our fire prevention and our storytime together, and, uh, that did not work out quite as well as we had hoped. Uh, there was a little problem with, uh, when you got the younger ones and you tell them that you're gonna read them a book and they need to snuggle in with mom and dad, they pretty much understand that, but when you tell a thirteen- or fourteen-year-old or a seventy- or eighty-year-old, "Let's snuggle, let's have a little snuggle time, we're gonna read a book," it doesn't go over so well, so... We'll be putting that back to, uh, to the younger ones, uh, doing that separate from the fire department open house. We also want to point out our community message center, and that that's available. Uh, we had a hundred and eleven community messages that were on that, uh, message center. In addition to that, we do, uh, generally, two fire safety messages, uh, a week. Some weeks, we'll have three or four, um, but we always like to have at least, uh, two fire safety messages, or if the police department contacts us or the ambulance service, we'll put their messages on as well. Uh, that outdoor community message center has been a true asset. We get a lot of calls on it, and we have a lot of people that stop in and tell us that they did see stuff on our, uh, outdoor message center. So, that is available for people if they want to use that, if they're a civic group. Uh, there's no fee for that, it's just an application form has to be filled out, and they can get ahold of Tara at the office at two-three-five, one-three-five-four to And they can get ahold of Tara at the office at (235) 1354 to get that worked out. On page 10, we have a list of the pre-plans that we did. That is a requirement that we report that to you. And those are the lists of the pre-plans that we did conduct in 2007. A pre-plan is something where the firefighters will go out and actually do a site visit, look at the building, and determine how they would fight a fire if there were a problem there. Where would they put their resources, any mutual aid resources, or anything like that? Generally, it's new buildings that we'll put into that, or buildings that we feel have a high hazard, we'll put that in there. On page 15, we talk about the firefighter training that we have. Last year, our firefighters went to 4,392 hours of training. That averages out to just about 100 hours per firefighter. Now, this includes the department training that we do, and then also outside training. In 2007, all of our firefighters finally have come up to a minimum training level of firefighter one. We have firefighters that are trained to firefighter one, firefighter two, firefighter three, fire motor operator, officer, instructors, et cetera. And we're very fortunate that we have Ridgewater College here in town. They help us out with our firefighter training, and we also send people elsewhere. We try to do as much in-house training as we can, because it's more cost-effective to do that. And so that works out pretty well for us. On page 16, we have a list of all of our trainings. There were 58 training sessions that were held at the fire station. And then on page 17, we talk about our training attendances. We were told at a conference a couple of years ago that we cannot tell you what the individual firefighters' percentages are anymore. So as you'll see, the chief officers of the department continue to attend more of the fire calls and more of the training than Company 7, 8, or 9. But it is, our firefighters do attend training very well. Our chief officers are attending 95% of the training that we put on. And Company 8 attends 82.5% of the training, and the fire calls there you can see also. Our statistics on page 18 actually tell you about our total calls. Last year, we had 324 calls. We had an average out-the-door response time of 4 minutes and 12 seconds. So basically, what that means is that from the time that the 911 dispatch center receives that first initial 911 call, until we have a fire truck actually leaving the door, and that is a fire truck with a minimum of five firefighters on it, it takes us 4 minutes and 12 seconds. Now, that time is a very good time, very proud of that time. And as you see, our time kind of goes up and down a little bit. This last year, we changed the way we record our times. Before, we used to have it on a air line that used to tell us when the truck left. And there was some question as to if maybe some of those times, the line was getting stepped on. And so we put an infrared beam across, very high, and so it only trips when the truck goes out. And as you see, there was not a big change in our response times. As a matter of fact, it went down one second from the previous year. The average time that we're on a call is three minutes. Average number of firefighters that respond on a call is 11. You'll notice that we used a fair amount of water this year. And we'll talk about that a little bit when we talk about our fire losses. About 250,000 gallons of water were used for firefighting. We had 6,582 hours of city firefighting. In rural firefighting, we had 459. Our total dollar loss for this year, we had a bad year for dollar loss. If you go back to 2004, it was about the same number as 2004. But in 2007, we had 1,398,000, so just about 1.4 million in dollar loss. Of those fires, the downtown apartment fire we had on 404 Southwest Litchfield Avenue was a half a million dollar loss. That was a number that we did get from the insurance company as what they paid out. Quam Residence, that was a rural fire, fire that happened out west of town. That was 265,000. Wilmer Fabricating, they had one of their new machines start on fire. That was a $250,000 loss. At the Wilmer Junior High, we had a fire at the Wilmer Junior High, and luckily, that happened right underneath a smoke detector, so the smoke detector went off quickly. It still ended up being a $100,000 loss fire, and kids were out of school for three days. So that was a substantial fire also. The Dykema Residence, north of town, they had a $75,000 fire. As a matter of fact, the Dykema family just brought food down to the firefighters to thank them for a job well done. What the Dykema family told us is that if the contractors would have been as careful with their home as the firefighters were in the middle of the night, they probably would have been able to have a lot less damage to their home. They ended up having to refinish their floors and things like that. And then the Sylvia Residence was a fire that started in the basement. There was a $60,000 loss there, and that was a fire that was caused by overheated lamp. Two weeks ago, Kevin talked about our injuries to our firefighters. And the thing that we're finding, we had eight injuries last year, as Kevin reported last couple of weeks ago, and most of those are sprains and strains. We have one firefighter who underwent surgery early this month, and hopefully, we'll be able to have him back with us for another 68 weeks. So that fire happened on Christmas Day, the evening of Christmas, the day before Christmas Eve, and then Christmas Eve. And so he's been recouping since then. Was able to have surgery here in Wilmer, and has put him out of work at his primary employee. And he is self-employed, so it's been a huge loss for him. And also, you know, he'll continue to be out as a firefighter. In order for a firefighter to come back, they have to do the whole physical abilities test to be able to get back on the department. So it takes extensive rehabilitation in order for firefighters to get back. On page 21, I break down the amounts of calls. We have rural. And again, anytime that the Fire Department responds in the rural area, and our response area is outlined on page 20, you will see that the orange represents the Wilmer Airport, the blue represents Wilmer Township, and the green represents Dover Township. Anytime that we give services in those contracted areas, Wilmer or Dover Township, the city clerk, along with Tara, our clerk typist at the fire station, work on putting a statement of services together for them. Now, the City of Wilmer receives none of those funds. Those dollars all go back to that individual township. So we get a lot of questions on that, that, you know, how come we get a bill in the townships and we don't get a bill in the city? The reason for that is, is it's a statement of services provided. Those dollars go directly to the township; they do not go to the City of Wilmer. On page 23, we talk about our mutual aid, what we received and what we gave. Again, we gave mutual aid to fire departments throughout the county. And then in return, we had mutual aid that we received for the downtown fire specifically. We had four departments, Benson, Candyote, Panok, and Spicer. On that downtown fire, one of the things that, as a fire chief, gives you heartburn when you hear that you have a fire in your downtown area, because generally, fires in the downtown area are very difficult to fight. Generally, you have a limited water supply, you have limited access, and it takes a lot of resources. We did have a lot of people asking us after that fire, "Well, how come you called for so much help?" Well, if you take a look at some of the fires that have happened in the last couple of months in downtown areas where they've burned down a block or two blocks, you understand quickly why we called for help early. It's easy to send them back home. It's hard to call for them when you're behind the eight ball. And in this particular situation, we were able to get ahead of the game. We had some good firefighters that went in and did a very good job on knocking that fire down. We also had two citizens that went in and rescued some people out of that particular building. If that had not happened, we would have probably had fatalities in that fire. So special thanks to the people that helped us with that, and also to our mutual aid partners for helping us in that particular fire. On page 24, we talk about our false alarms. Last year, we had eight times where we billed people. We billed them $250 for each false alarm after five, and we did receive $2,000 back for those fines. And we talk about our false alarms. 36% of our calls were false alarms. And as you notice on page 25, that is the most of any of the types of fires that we have. With the amount of alarm systems we have in our community, I feel very strongly that we are doing a good job of controlling our false alarms. But there are a lot of things happening nationally, statewide, and we are also looking at the way we respond on fire alarms. About 98% to 99% of all false alarms are actually false alarms. In other words, there's not a problem there. And we need to look at adjusting our response to make it, when you do a risk management evaluation of that, sending two engines, a ladder, a cheese car, and 44 firefighters to a false alarm is probably not a good risk management risk to take. So we'll probably be addressing that in the next year. Area of fire origin, you'll see that the majority of our fires were vehicles. They were either the engine area or the vehicle storage area. If you add those up, we had about 25% of our calls were vehicle fires, or related to vehicle fires. And also, 10.8% of our calls are undetermined. An undetermined fire is a fire that we can't actually rule the cause. And State Fire Marshal has said that if we cannot actually pinpoint the actual cause of that fire, we have to list it as undetermined. And so that's the reason why you see that number. It's only four of our calls are actual fires, but it ends up to be 10% of our calls. On page 27, again, we talk about our fire calls to the junior high, the high school, and the middle school. And again, as I'd stated earlier, $100,000 fire at the junior high. Seven false alarms at the schools, including the junior high fire. And if it hadn't been right under that smoke detector like it was, it probably would have caused more extensive damage. I was working in Burnsville when they had their fire that was caused by an arsonist. Of course, this was not caused by arson, and they were out of school for a better part of a year. The next two pages are the alarms by month, day, and the following pages by time of the day. So if you want to have a fire call, the worst time of the day to have that would be on a Thursday in July at about noon. So that's when we had most of our calls for service. You put all those numbers together, and that's what it tells you, so. Then on page 33, the following nine pages actually give you a breakdown of all of our calls. Our charter says that we have to give that to you and tell you where all of our calls were and what they were. And so that is there, and you can review that at your leisure. And if you have questions on that, you can ask me. One thing that I thought would be important to point out this year is that we had a very successful year in grant application. With the city match and federal matches, we received grants of $1,008,000 for 2007. Of that $998,000 grant that we received for the radios, the City of Wilmer received about $230,000. If you recall, we are the regional grant writer and the host of the grant for upgrading all of the radios in Candyote County to 800 megahertz. And so the emergency services, Fire Department, has taken the lead on that, and we have secured the funding for that. And those radios have been purchased, and we do have those at the fire station. We're looking at installing those in our fire trucks and in our buildings shortly. And the programming will happen, hopefully, within the next couple of months. And then there will be an implementation process after that. That concludes my 2007 annual report. Again, the Fire Department would like to thank the mayor and council members for their support, and we look forward to another fire-safe year in 2008. With that, I'll entertain any questions that there may be.
Chief Kelvin, thank you for the report and all the data. Sometimes it takes a while for that to sink in, but thanks a lot. Council members, do you have any questions? Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, could you give me your opinion on the preemption system? Does it work? Does it help you?
The traffic preemption?
Yes.
Yes. The traffic preemption is a valuable tool, and that was one thing that we implemented, I believe, as a city, spearheaded by the Police Department and the Fire Department, I believe, in 2001, was it, Jim? 2001, we got that in. You decrease your response time, you decrease your risk. In other words, you get a green light. Our system is set up to where if you're driving, opposing traffic from the sides will get a flashing white light. If you're going the same direction, or you're coming towards the emergency vehicle, you'll get a solid light. So that's the way our system was set up in Wilmer. Some of the systems will give you three flashes on three different directions, but we're giving you solid coming towards you. Or if you're meeting them, you'll get a solid white light. And then the cross traffic gets a blinking light. I would say minimally, that's decreasing our response time, probably a minute, minute and a half per call in town. When you get outside of the city, it would be bigger than that, larger than that.
Thank you.
Preemption works very well. We use the 3M program as the program we have here, so.
Chief, you know, our city is growing, and growing in all directions. Do you have an opinion yet about a substation for the Fire Department?
Oh, I sure do. Do you have an hour? I grew up in Wilmer, as most of you know. And in 1978, I remember reading an article in the West Central Tribune, and it talked about a need for a substation on the north side of Wilmer. It's 2008. The need hasn't gone away. We still need a substation on the north side of town. Now, what that facility would look like for the Fire Department is different than if we tried to do a joint facility. Joint facility, in my opinion, and as I have presented in my annual report every, or in my budget report every year, I feel a joint facility is the way to go, cost-effective wise. But if we had a catastrophic incident that happened in a rail yard, again, remember, we're the second busiest rail yard in the state of Minnesota. If we had a catastrophic event that happened in the rail yard, we would have trouble getting services to the north side of town. Now, I do understand that we have Counter Road 5, and I do understand that we do have Counter Road 9. And we could make access to those locations if we needed through those two areas. We know that trains are getting longer. When we meet with the people down at the rail yard, they're telling us that the trains are only going to continue to get longer, they're not going to get any shorter. And that's going to mean that more of those crossroads are going to be blocked. It's a concern for us. Fire doubles in size every 30 seconds. So in my opinion, we need a substation or a joint facility on the north side of town. However that looks, we should be working towards that. I would certainly hope I'd see that in my career.
Chief, when you say a joint facility, give me a sense of what that means.
A joint facility, to me, what I would see that looking like would be if the rescue squad, the ambulance, needed a substation or additional facilities. Or even if we wanted to build something, or the county wanted to build something, or the Rice Hospital wanted to build something north of town, we partnered with them so that we were not a standalone facility. In this day of tight dollars, I think that we have to be fiscally responsible with the dollars that are given. And if that means joining facilities, and we work out of, we would work out of a facility they may put up, and then we'll take some of their resources and put them in our fire station. There's nothing wrong with an ambulance sitting in the fire station. There's nothing wrong with a rescue squad sitting in the fire station. It happens all over the United States, it happens all over the world. But it's not happening here. Maybe it should. You asked for me for my opinion, so you're getting it. You maybe don't want it, but...
I was hoping you wouldn't be shy about that. As you speak about it, though, maybe that's one of those developing issues that the council should have a little work session on and hear all the ins and outs of that, because it is long-range planning, and it's expensive.
It's very expensive.
And we're not going to get any outside help for it, I don't think. It's going to have to come from within our city and our county to put this together, so perhaps we need to sit down and talk about that.
Yeah, and I'd be willing to sit down and talk about that. And I think, you know, there have been discussions that have taken place, and we need to keep things very positive. And, you know, we need to understand that I have needs as a fire chief, and the other agencies also have needs, and we have to be respectful of those. And if we agree on it, it's fine. If we don't agree on it, that's fine, too. So, but you asked me my opinion, so you got it.
Thanks, Mel. Marv, any other comments from council members? Councilmember Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the county is looking at replacing the rescue squad building, perhaps a new one, so it probably wouldn't be bad to be talking to them presently. One other question, I noticed that you had responded to several frozen sprinkler systems this year. What actually do you do? I mean, you get there, I mean, the sprinkler's going off, evidently, there's some water damage. How was it put back into place?
Well, this year, I tried to determine why we had so many. I believe we had seven of them in two weeks. And I tried to determine that. The only thing that, generally speaking, when you get a strong wind, generally, it's not so bitter cold as it was this time around. One of them was human error. We know that for a fact. One of the businesses told us that they were having trouble with their doors because their doors were freezing. So what they did is they wedged the doors open, and held them open. And when they left, they allowed the doors to close. At the end of the business day, they allowed the door to close. And when the door closed, it heated up, and when it heated up, the pipe was frozen because it had been wedged open all day. That froze and then broke. The other ones, the one at the nursing home, that one, we have not yet been able to determine why that happened. It's the third time that sprinkler pipe has broke, or water lines in that wall have broke. Randy Cardell and myself went out there, met with them, met with the contractor, met with the sprinkler contractor, and we gave them some opinions as far as what we felt they could do to keep their fire protection in place, but also make it so that hopefully this won't happen again. When the Fire Department gets a call for a broken sprinkler system, we arrive, first thing we do is make sure there's not a fire, which generally, you can determine that pretty quickly. You determine there's not a fire, then at that point, you shut off the water to the sprinkler system. And then once you do that, then we go in with squeegees, mops. We had one at the bank down on 28th and First Street, North American State Bank. And after that, we had bought some shop vacs, because we'd had a number of those calls. And actually, they donated two additional shop vacs because they wanted us to have some additional ones. they donated two additional shop vacs because they wanted us to have some additional ones along with pumps, so that we don't have to carry the full buckets of water. You can imagine, when you're vacuuming up water off of a tile floor, it doesn't take long to fill up 10 gallons, and then try to carry that, and to do it safely, you end up spilling some of it, of course, but they actually bought us a pump to where we can actually hook up a 50-foot section of hose and pump it into a drain, so. So, that's what we do, and we do the best we can. One thing to remember, a lot of people talk about broken sprinkler pipes and all the damage they cause, but the fire, I mean, the broken sprinkler pipe that we had at Office Max, that particular situation, they ended up losing two boxes of paper. Now, if you compare that, and they opened up for business at normal business time. Now, that was a large pipe that broke. It wasn't a sprinkler head that was flowing 7 to 25 gallons of water a minute, it was probably flowing 100 gallons a minute, because it was a broken pipe. Compare that to the junior high fire I told you about earlier, where they had a small fire containing one small area, smoke spread through the whole building, they were closed for three days. Sprinkler systems are still the way to go. Sprinkler system is the right answer. Sprinkler systems, put out fires in the incipient stage and control the fire.
Thanks for your report.
Anybody else? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good opportunity for you to maybe recruit some new firefighters. I see you've got six new ones. What are basically the requirements for a person that might be listening over Rack 18 right now to become a firefighter with our fire department?
Well, currently, we're not taking any applications because we are full, but basically, you have to be 18 years old, you have to have a good driving record, you have to have a clear criminal history, you have to pass a written test, an interview, a background check, a physical down at ACMC, and then a physical abilities test. And we find our physical abilities test to be somewhat challenging. Basically, you have to simulate rescuing a 120-pound individual from a fifth-floor building, basically by yourself is what you have to simulate. And so, we simulate you through that particular event. We do provide training for that. We do have a hands-on where the potential candidate can come down and actually watch firefighters do it, and then we give them any tips that we can. Working with ACMC this fall, we were trying to determine if our time for that test was a good time or not. You have to do that in about three minutes, our test, and when you remember when it came through council, it's a pretty rigorous test. There are other departments in Minneapolis-St. Paul area that are giving their firefighters 15 minutes to complete that test. Our firefighters have to do it in under two, under three minutes. So, our firefighters, when they get on, are in good shape. When they've been on a while, they might be more like me.
But you do have a waiting list, in case anybody is interested.
We do accept applications year-round, correct? Yep. So, either contact Dab over at City Hall, or Tara at the fire station, or you can get it online.
Thank you.
I think it's time to adjourn. Mr. Mayor, Amar, thank you for your report. Council members, if you have questions, seek him out at the fire department. Is this related to Amar?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just a notice to the council that I intend to offer at the March 31st special meeting, a motion to rescind our action adopted tonight as it relates to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of...
Is there a second?
Some of...
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.